Council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide input tonight. My name is Ariel Mendez and I'm a resident in the city of Bend. This is my first time providing public input at a council meeting and I'm grateful for the opportunity. Since last summer, I have also been a board member of Bend Bikes, a grassroots nonprofit organization dedicated to improving bicycle infrastructure in Bend. My wife and I would love the ability to ride our bikes more often, whether it is across town to work, dropping off and picking up kids at school, going to Juniper Pool, running errands, go out to dinner downtown, seeing friends, et cetera. Right now, we face a choice between driving everywhere or assuming the unacceptable risk of riding a bike on a busy road. For example, my wife would love to commute to work at the hospital, but she doesn't feel safe riding, especially along northeast NEF Road. I myself often do pick up and drop off my kids at Bear Creek Elementary on an electric cargo bike, but there is no way that I'd let my kids ride the same route on their bikes. We can continue to focus on moving cars or we can focus on moving people and giving people a wider range of choice in how they get around town. I understand that winter makes it difficult to walk and bike in Bend, but as spring approaches, what about the other nine months of the year? Especially in summertime, when tourism peaks and each trip by car counts for a disproportionate amount because the roads and parking areas are already saturated. A decision to walk or go by bike has a disproportionate impact in reducing traffic and parking demand during those peak periods. As the current pothole crisis suggests, I don't know if you guys have a cute name for it, but pothole crisis sounds pretty good. Moving people by cars is really expensive. Once protected paths, walks and lanes are in place, moving people by bike and on foot is cheap by comparison. Give people the option to get around without a car and they will. You may wonder about the impact on the economy and on traffic of a plan like this. The New York City Department of Transportation recently completed a long-term study beginning in 2007. The study compared mobility, safety and economic benefits of 30 miles of protected bike lanes to corridors that did not receive those upgrades. The study has some really impressive outcomes, including travel times by car along projected corridors remain constant or even improved, bicycle volumes increased dramatically, but total injuries as a result of crashes decreased by 20%, and retail outlets along the streets with a protected bike lane saw a greater increase in sales than outlets on similar corridors. Let's move and let's invest in moving people, not just cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez.
Hi, my name is Ross Windsor. I live here in Bend. I'm here today to ask you to support active transportation in Bend like Ariel. We're all lucky to live in such a beautiful city, but it's easy to see how fast it's growing. Rapid growth makes it critical that our city's transportation policies should focus on moving people and not just moving cars. Encouraging cycling and walking as well as transit has many benefits for the city. It will help us reduce our reliance on fossil fuels, improve air quality and reduce the amount of wear and tear on our roads, which in turn decreases maintenance costs, as we all know is a pretty big issue right now. Supporting active transportation also improves traffic congestion. Most people biking and walking, more people biking and walking means fewer cars on the road, which benefits all road users, not just those who walk or ride a bike. The average American household spends 16% of its budget on transportation, which is more than food or on healthcare. And for low-income families, it can be as much as 50% of their income. And since they're less expensive, walking and biking are the primary modes of transportation for many low-income families. So from a transportation perspective, making it easier and safer for people to walk or bike is a matter of fairness and equity. From a personal perspective, I'm a pretty avid cyclist and I use a bike to get around town most of the time. Although I'm experienced in sharing the road with traffic, I still find myself in uncomfortable or I might even say scary situations on a weekly or sometimes daily basis. Sometimes situations arise because of a distracted driver, but often it's just simply due to poor street design, puts people on bikes in conflict with cars. People, whether they're pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, will always make mistakes. You can't really eliminate human error. But by designing streets that safely accommodate all users, the risk of collisions and injuries can be greatly reduced. Things like protected bike lanes where there's a physical barrier between bikes and cars, bike paths and narrower streets make it safer and easier to bike around town. They also encourage cycling for people who are not necessarily cyclists, but might like to bike around town instead of drive. Proper infrastructure makes it easy for all ages and ability levels to ride bikes around town, not just those who are fit and fearless. And even though I ride a bike around town almost every day, there are certain places or stores around town that I do my best to avoid, basically just because it's kind of scary to get there by bike. And I'd really like to be able to safely visit any part of town and not be worried about how fast the traffic is or whether there's a bike lane on the way there. And to really encourage active transportation, be more safe, high-quality cycling, pedestrian infrastructure, I'd like to ask you to dedicate more funding to this, support active transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Windsor.
Hello, my name is Al Jhurabna and I live in Bend. Our city is a beautiful city. Most of us live here because we love the city, its atmosphere and the environment. We enjoy our fresh air and blue sky. We also have a great responsibility to protect our environment, not just for us, but for our kids and their kids. Today, I'd like to say a few words about what that means to me from a transportation perspective. We all know the impact of cars, not just economic, but environmental. A NASA analysis found that motor vehicles are the greatest contributor to atmospheric warming because they release pollutants and greenhouse gases. Nationwide, there is a $740 billion backlog on road repairs. Gas prices and obesity rates continue to rise. Healthcare costs are out of control. The list goes on. What this all means is that we need to invest in other means of transportation to mitigate these terrifying effects cars can have. Creating better and safer infrastructure for biking and walking is one of the most important and cost-effective things we can do today. More and more Americans are choosing active transportation instead of driving. They do this because it saves them money, keeps them healthier and they can contribute more to their own community. It's been shown in numerous places around the country that local businesses actually thrive when they offer bike and pedestrian access. For example, one car parking spot can fit over a dozen bikes. Or closing a small downtown street to cars and replacing parking spots with outdoor seating, just imagine how many people would just come to hang out and spend money there. Your cars on the roads also means fewer traffic jams, less stress, diminished need for road repair and maintenance, less conflict between road users, less pollution and better air. And when kids bike and walk to school, they learn a good and healthy habits that they will likely continue throughout their life. But all of this is possible only with a solid and safe bike and pedestrian infrastructure such as protected bike lanes, continuous bike paths throughout the city, continued sidewalks, lower speed limits for safer crossings, race pedestrian crosswalks and so on. If people feel safe walking and biking outside, they are more likely to do it. Investing in bicycle infrastructure is very cost-effective. I want to give you one great example. For 600 million, pardon, for $60 million, which is the cost of just one single mile of urban highway, Portland created a new citywide bicycle network that earned the city the highest possible platinum rating as bicycle-friendly community. The huge investment is estimated to save the city around $400 million in healthcare by 2040. In closing, active transportation and especially bicycling is an important part of the 21st century transportation mix. We need to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Marika Green and I live at 1252 Northwest Elgin Avenue, which is just two blocks off of Galveston on the west side of Bend. I tell you this exactly because our choice to live in this location is entirely due to its walk and bike ability and its close proximity to our work and the schools and daycares of our two children. Being able to get to work, school, the park, library, restaurants by walking and biking is incredibly important to our family. We love avoiding the hassles of traffic and parking. We love what it does for our physical and emotional well-being, the environment that allows us to say hello to our neighbors and how much gas money it saves us. But the ability to live the way we do on the west side of Bend is a privilege. Most people can't afford a home on the west side and not everybody has the ability to live walking distance from the place that they work. We didn't fully understand this issue until we lived for about six months off Butler Market Road. We were a family of three at the time and we only had one car. This required either my husband or I to ride to work daily to the west side every day, at least one way. This is not easy or a pleasant commute, especially at dawn or dusk. Crossing the railroad tracks, narrow to non-existent bike lanes and extremely heavy traffic on Third Street and other major roads makes the journey a bit treacherous. And certainly, it's not something I would feel safe attempting with my children. There are a few extremely committed bike commuters out there, I raise my hat to you, but I believe there would be so many more if the right infrastructure was in place. Even on the west side, which has some of the best walkability in Bend, the infrastructure is lacking. Just the other day, on a crosswalk I use almost daily, a man's life was taken. I cannot tell you how many times at that very crosswalk I have not been seen as a pedestrian and once even by a Deschutes County Sheriff's Department I was, I was not seen. I am here today to ask this council to value the safety of pedestrians and cyclists. When looking at ways to develop our growing city, consider all the ways we can slow down traffic and encourage walking and biking. Please allocate consistent and meaningful funding to improve upon bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Finally, please realize that I, there are many people in Bend who would just love to grab a cup of coffee or take their kids out for ice cream without getting in their cars. And they certainly want to feel safe. And right now, they are intimidated to do so with the existing street infrastructure. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this topic.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Fisher and I live at 20530 Barrows Court, which is near Broaster House and Third. This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting and I was asked here because of Bend Bikes and I'm also a member of Central Oregon Running Club, also known as Cork. So I'm here to bring attention to the importance of sidewalks and continuous sidewalks. I also work at Deschutes Public Library and I was working at the East Side Library over by Costco for about six or seven or eight months before I got transferred to a different location. And right there on Dean Swift Road, there are no sidewalks. It's a huge community. There's a lot of parents and families and kids and daily all see people walking along Dean Swift and people, it's blind curves, people can't see. And the road really isn't wide enough for people to be walking on the street right there. It's not safe. In addition, I also, on Bear Creek right there, I will, when I was commuting, I would see people in their wheelchairs on the side of the road because the sidewalk there is not adequate. And as you guys know, the speed limit there is 35 and people are often going 40 miles per hour. Now to bring it back to another more personal issue, I'm a runner. And the area I live in, it's actually not possible to get out of my development without stepping off the sidewalk. And that's stepping off the sidewalk onto a street, Broaster House, where people go 35, 40 miles per hour. And if you go to the area right as it approaches Third, there's no sidewalk right there and people often don't see you. It's not safe to go on the other side. So what ends up happening is I'm just trusting that the person behind me is not going to hit me. Reflective gear only goes so far in this instance. And when it's icy, I basically have to make a decision about whether I'm going to go for a run and risk my life or whether I should stay at home. And the only other alternative to this is to get into my car. And that defeats the point of having this, the canal trail right across the road on Third. So I encourage you guys to please consider improving our sidewalk system for the safety of all of the people in Bend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hello, thank you. My name is Brett Yost. I live in Bend. I'm here also to advocate for active transportation, specifically bicycling and walking as a means of transportation in our city. I've been advocating for this for over 15 years now and I generally have been met with very receptive and positive feedback to these ideas that we're hearing tonight. However, we have not made much progress and I feel as largely the theme that I hear over and over again is we just don't have the money to pay for it. And so I think a goal along the order of maybe 10% or over 10% of all trips made by bicycle or walking would be a fantastic goal for Bend. I think other small to mid-sized cities have that goal now and are working towards or meeting that goal. It would be almost tenfold increase for us and that would be a very incredibly positive transformational thing for Bend, one of the most positive transformational things for Bend I can think of. So how can we get there? I think it comes down to money, basically. I would like to offer to you a tour of the streets of Bend to see the damage by studded tires that we have to streets that have been repaved, completely repaved in the last one and a half to two and a half years that are always, already showing very significant wear to actually already potholing out. This is destroying our budget and preventing us from doing projects that have been proposed but not funded. So it's just, I'm walking and biking every day. I see this damage in front of my eyes. I'd like other people to see it and I'd like to have a conversation around that. I'd like to offer that Washington State knew this year has a fee now on studded tires for the first time. So it's possible. It seems to me like that's a nonpartisan thing. That's free market. You know, if you want to use studded tires and wear out the roads multiple orders of time faster than other users, then pay a fee to do that. And then we can have some budget for some of the things that some others of us would like to see. Also, another thing that I'd like to offer is that in the last year or two, a number of cities have had 600 or six-figure to seven-figure judgments against the city in deaths of pedestrians or cyclists where the city was known to have substandard or dangerous infrastructure. The lawyers went after the city and won. So if you'd like any information about those lawsuits, I have that information as well. But I, I just would, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pearl Stark. I'm a resident of Bend also and here to speak about active transportation. And I didn't have time to prepare much, sorry about that, but I do bike just about every day, just about every day here in Bend. And there's a thousand things we can say about how great active transportation is for our personal health and for our community health. People talk to each other more when they're out on the streets, seeing each other, walking and biking. I see my neighbors. I interact with them. People are able to stop at shops and browse. They're not driving by fast. It's great for health of the community and it saves a lot of money. And a lot of these people have said that already. Thank you so much for doing that work for me. The main thing I just wanted to bring up was that I have talked to a lot of my coworkers. I have, I work at an office on Third Street and I live on the west side and so it's Third and only. And so biking there, especially this winter, but you know, this winter was a bit of an abnormal winter. I had a bunch of days I couldn't bike because there's just no good way to get there. And I would try taking the bus and I did take the bus a number of times, but I've been, you know, the five minutes to walk to the bus and then the bus drops me off on the other side of Greenwood. So I still have to find a way to walk across Greenwood. If there were separated bike lanes, ways that I could bike, a lot of those days, the biking was actually good. The problem was that I was afraid of the cars. So if we can find a way to get from the east side to the west side, from the north to the south, just a few good routes across town, people will use them. I talked to a lot of my coworkers and I, they mountain bike, they bike recreationally all the time and I asked them why they don't bike commute and it usually comes down to safety. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Meg Chun and I live at 1510 Northwest Iowa. I'm a 25-year resident of Bend and a local business owner and also I sit on the board of the Oregon Outdoor Association. And I'm here simply to express both my personal support and the support of the OOA in the initiative to develop safe, non-motorized transportation across town in both directions. There's been a myriad of reasons as to why this is a good thing. I don't need to rehash all of that. You've all heard it, we all know it, and I'd like to just simply state that it's the right thing to do, so let's prioritize it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Broadhead. I'm a nurse practitioner here in the local community and I live in the northeast side of Bend and I'm an avid cyclist. And I guess I would just sort of like to start by saying that I feel like Bend is sort of redefining itself in that it's rapidly changing. A lot of the people here are starting to be younger, more active and cycling, I think, could be a real benefit to the city and a lot of Bend would really take advantage of that. This town is mostly a spandex cycling community where people don't really commute. And then in general, I want to give some specific recommendations. I have a small child I try to ride around town with and go run errands and whatnot. And this seems to me that the main strategy in Bend has been to paint lines on most of the major corridors in town, which brings a lot of inherent safety risks. You're basically trying to get cyclists to ride in the heaviest, fastest, you know, most heavily-used corridors of town. When there's perfectly good residential side streets right next to those corridors, that could be dedicated bike routes. Some of the major examples would be, for instance, in the well-developed northwest side, there's a bike path that comes down and comes into Galveston and then there's a white, painted white line that goes down in Galveston, when the bike path literally ends right at the end of the Hartford Residential Road. And all you would have to do is make that the main bicycle avenue that just paralyze, parallels Galveston straight down the road and just separate by one block and put the cyclists in the low-speed, low-used residential areas and then rearrange stop signs so that people aren't blowing through in front of you. And so these are a lot of some of the low-cost, high-yield types of strategies that can happen. There's lots of other examples, big sections that go along NEF, there's a perfectly, there's usable streets next to that. And many of the other situations, I find myself not riding on that white line that is worn off because cars are running over it with my child in the trailer behind me, but going in on the side streets. Another good example is Hawthorne that goes into Juniper Recreation Area. You can ride off the sidewalk, down and then ride along side streets there. And if you simply change the stop signs, since you don't want cross-traffic going through the residential areas anyway, it would be good for cyclists and good for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am here to speak primarily just in support of what your staff is already doing, what you all are already doing and what we've been advocating for for a long time and offer maybe a few additional creative ways to look at it, including some financing ideas. But first, start with a quote from the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Ray LaHood, who said, "By focusing on livability, we can help transform the way transportation serves the American people and create safer, healthier communities that provide access to economic opportunities." So changing the lens from transportation to livability is one component. I know we talk a lot about that here. My name's Katie McClure. I live at Northeast 10th and NEF, right on that hospital corridor. I drive in my car a lot. I have two kids that go to school. We go to the grocery store, we go to restaurants. I work with a number of different agencies around town. We go to the library. I would love to get out of my car. I could do any one of those things every day, all week, on my bike with my kids, but I can't do it safely right now. So if you could get all of us crazy people out of our cars, then those who think that we have a war against cars could have a lot more space and time on those streets. So I think it's a pretty easy argument there. Professionally, I've spent 10 years in healthcare in a role called resource stewardship where we studied, as an integrated system, where we studied how you can keep people healthy so you can provide less care, so you can charge less. And what I learned really quickly in that role, and I had oversight of over $400 million worth of lives, was that the solution isn't in healthcare. And there's a lot of money going into healthcare and insurance right now, as we all know. And so I spent the rest of my career since then working upstream and primarily working to develop partnerships in communities where city governments, schools, grocery stores, restaurants, businesses, all put together a comprehensive wellness strategy. So the weight of that effort is not on any one shoulder or one industry and they're working together strategically. What the outcomes of those have been, and I'll give you one example, was in one town, we saw 15% reduction in overweight and obese people in that town over a course of three years. And if you talk to anybody in healthcare or public health, a 15% reduction in that is unheard of. And the associated costs, both in medical spend for the diseases related to that are extraordinary and then even greater than that is the productivity in the workforce and the employers in that community. So taking a look at kind of the healthcare lens of what you're doing here, getting people out of their cars, socializing, talking to their neighbors is a way to also attract funding. Oh, and this same community saw 50, 5-0% reduction in childhood obesity. Damn, I didn't get to my finance ideas.
Oh, the last one was a big point.
Yeah, but there's good finance ideas in there, healthcare.
We'll come back.
You can send us those ideas.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hossman Arson, a two-year resident investor here in Bend. I'm retired. I don't wear spandex. And like many of us, no. And like many of us, I am, I came here because I'm outdoor active. 30% roughly of all transportation is less than a mile, 60% of vehicular, less than a mile. If this sounds like a conspiracy, I'm not part of, I just happen to be here at the same time, so talking about, but I'd like to talk about specific solutions. My background is I've been involved in bicycle advocacy throughout the Philly, Pennsylvania and state-level, board chair of the League of American Bikes. One of the things that I'm requesting, this is my ask, my is requesting is that you have a specific line item to build four or five bike boulevards. Bike boulevards, you take, I think it was talked about recently by whoever, you take an existing road such as, let's say 13th or 16th, right next to 15th, which is very busy. You take that road, you put signs up that says bicyclists, pedestrians have priority. Some places will need a stop sign, so a little bit of capital investment. But most of the places, you just, you have a street that exists, the funding comes, at least we're in Pennsylvania, from the maintenance fund. Because when you're repaving or retarring, you're basically painting a new line or changing the painting. So it's a very low cost. The impact, the impact is huge. Like driving, if it's not safe and not comfortable, you won't do it. A lot of people have talked about that. Your suggestion of stopping a one-lane of traffic, that also works, but that's a bit more politically sensitive. But this, we could take several existing cross north-south, east-west roads and just try it. It's minimal cost. Our city department can tell us what it is, but just try it. I think you'll be amazed at how quickly it works. I've, in my role as board chair of the league, gone around various cities where this has worked. OSU is going to have 5,000-plus students. Their entry and exit is on a lane, sorry, is on a lane about EAY on a very busy road. That's crazy. They are not going to bicycle. If we give them an alternative bike boulevard, same in the community college where I live, it'll work better. So my request, a line item, build two, three, four bike boulevards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, and thank you for letting us all chat with you today. My name's Kelly and I live in the Southern Crossing neighborhood and I also am here in support of active transportation. I'm a big fan. My husband and I walked here tonight. I know that it's very nice, walkable, bikeable on the west side, but going to the east side is another story. I know I'm reiterating a lot of other people's points, but for myself personally, I visit my mom, The Vintage, on 27th Street. I'm able to cobble together Central Oregon Canal Trail, Markspur Trail. I'm able to cobble together Central Oregon Canal Trail, Markspur Trail, it's pretty okay, little dicey crossing Third Street, but then I get to Greenwood Ave. And I cannot believe that that is marked as a bike lane. The bike lane is narrow, and there's tons of cars and big old trucks, and I always feel like I'm going to get sucked underneath those wheels when they're going by. Taking the sidewalk next to the bike lane isn't an option because it's way too narrow for pedestrians and cyclists. Plus, you cannot guarantee that there's no one going to be cutting you off either behind or ahead. It's really a dicey situation. But I do believe that Bend has a terrific opportunity with this transportation systems plan to include safe bike and walk and bike routes, north to south, east to west, circumferentially to connect our neighborhoods, our parks, and of course, our businesses. It would encourage more people to use the active transportation. Huge plus. I know it's possible because I saw a very inspiring TED Talk by Jeff Speck, who's a city planner, and his talk is called Four Ways to Make a City More Walkable. It's an entertaining TED Talk. He's got other ones accessible on YouTube and on the TED Talk website. So I actually did Xerox his transcripts, so I will leave them with you, just for your perusal at your convenience. One of the things that Mr. Speck said was that bicycles and bicycling are the current revolution underway in only some American cities, but when you build it, they will come. So why don't we have a bicycling revolution here? Bend's an active city. Please take advantage of our already active culture and become a shining example of how an active transportation can transform our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Bowers. I've lived in Bend for almost 20 years now, right close to downtown here. This is my first time addressing you in person, and I'm also here to speak in support of active transportation. Because as Bend grows, the lack of continuous well-maintained sidewalks and bike lanes stops being quaint and starts being inconvenient and hazardous. A particular concern to me is Franklin between Third and Bend High, where all winter I watched students forced into the road, the hardly-at-all plowed, slick, heavily-trafficked road to get to school. We have to concentrate on the schools, I think, first, and certainly the high schools, where we would expect students to be walking. Also, Galveston, especially, well, all of Galveston, but the Galveston Bridge, the fact that there's not sidewalks on all sides of that bridge is really crazy to me. We have wonderful recreational walking and biking paths, which I love and our tourists love. But for residents, it's more important to be able to safely and easily get to work, shopping, and errands. So to really encourage alternative transportation modes, it needs to be easier to bike or walk to those places that people have to go every day than to drive alone in their cars. And once we make it easier, that's when we're going to see people opting to that. We've got to get away from just the hard cores who are willing to brave, you know, Greenwood and everything. I'd also like to speak specifically to that river path interruption at Newport and Portland, the city's longest stoplight, it feels like. And that is so disruptive to that beautiful path that would give us a lot of the city connected, except for that one big blockage. So I'd like to thank you for investing in the health and well-being of our residents by prioritizing walking and biking-friendly infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.